Support, uh, we'll ask, we'll start with invitation, we'll ask, uh, Councilwoman Bond to give us the invitation, invitation.
Father and Mary, we give you so, we thank you for this day, day we have seen, Father and Mary, we just let everything that's done on today be done, it's in our, in the bettering of the city. We give you glory on your friends and we give you everything, amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bond. Council members, you had an opportunity to review your meeting minutes. Are there any, uh, questions about the meeting minutes asked presented to you? If there are no questions, we'll approve the meeting minutes from the previous meeting. All those in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the chair, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. I number. One, on the unfinished business, we got board appointment, which is a continued item from continued meeting that'll be on that some field of our, our boards. Um, tonight I have three people. Whoever, whoever agreed to be on the board, uh, two of them need to be appointed by the council, um, of the board of. We have two appointments for the Board of Adjustments, um, these two appointments, the first one is Miss Maddie McCall, you will just wave your hand, Mr. McCall. Alright, and Miss Johnny Hood, would you please raise your hand, Miss Hood. Miss, uh, Al Jean is also on that board. I mean, she's on the plan, is on the board, but she's the coordinator of the zoning boards. So can you give a brief synopsis of what they'll be doing? For about thirty seconds.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Council, uh, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, okay, on the planning adjustment board, that board is the board that handles things that are beyond the stress of our, of our board. What we do, what you do, you come together and you look at, um, our visualization record, a part of the zoning community, and then you will, um, make recommendations to the mayor and city council. Um, for example, um, if someone wanted to put a church in a residential area, that is, that is a very important adjustment. And then you all come together, we look at everything, and then you make a decision, and then recommend to the mayor and city council.
Alright, that being said, thank you, ma'am, uh, for that, those dates, uh, two ladies, I know y'all already knew that, that was just for John Q. Tocqueville, so they could understand what it was. Um, I know the council members have questions to these, um, ladies. Just before start with Mr. McCall first. Mr. McCall, will you rise?
You're needed to.
To be on the zoning board, to have the city of Aliceville.
No, ma'am, do, uh, anybody got any question? Alright, cool. Thank you, all those in favor of appointing Mr. McCall as a Board of Adjustment, uh, member, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the chair, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Miss Hood, I know everybody. That's a good thing, that's a good thing.
Eric says, I got you, I'm in the mind.
I like it, hey, I like it, I like it.
Oh, so I will do my very best, and whatever I can do, I always bring my eighteen, as long as I have a eighteen to work with.
Anybody have any question, Miss, uh, Miss Hood? Alright, that, we entertain most to approve, uh, Miss Hood being on the Board of Adjustments. I'm saying, well, is there any other discussion? Alright, if not, let it be known by saying, if all those in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the chair, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. The last board, it does not have to be voted on, but just for, you know, uh, not the planning and zoning board. Uh, that is going, go let Miss Al Jean talk about the plan that's on the board briefly.
Alright, my favorite board. Um, what happens on the planning and zoning board, whatever, whenever there is a board of adjustment, when they make adjustment, then that leaves for them, then come to the planning and zoning. Planning and zoning, and actually, we, uh, we write ordinances, we change laws, we, uh, write laws, we make sure laws are being embodied, we handle all nuisance complaints and things of that nature, and then we make recommendations, um, to the mayor and city council. So anything that is going on in the city that has to do with zoning, residential buildings, uh, street naming dedication, all that goes with planning and zoning. Great board. Again, I'm happy to have all you ladies to be a part of these boards.
And Miss Bren, I saw her card, you have another, there's Miss Dancy, Miss Brenda Dancy, she, she wanted to be, she gonna be on that board, say on that board. Do you have anything you want to say, Miss Dancy?
I just want to say, uh, thanks to you very much, you know, you're my best.
Hey, stop coming to a meeting at the start, so, we gotta, we gotta get people to come to meetings, because we can't, we can't have quorum. So, uh, that's one thing that I will push from, uh, you know, for myself and all the councilmen, uh, we won't, we just gonna be active, so they don't meet once a month. They meet on occasion, but whenever they do meet, they need it, so thank you for your service. We can't pay you, but if we could, we would. So, uh, but thank y'all for what y'all doing, being willing to serve on those boards. Um, that being said, we'll move on to the new business, uh. Uh, new business, we have, uh, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, uh, budget for the city of Aliceville. The total expenses on, for the city of Aliceville, among the various apart, various departments this year, that's being proposed is, uh, cost to a total of two million seventy-four thousand two hundred dollars. And total expense, total income approximated is two million one hundred and thirty thousand. Um, those budgets go towards, um, all of our administration costs, which is city hall and staff, police department. And I, and I go each, I just say that, I'm not gonna go line by line, but I'm gonna say which department has it. Administration, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, police department, fifty-five hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, city department, three hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred dollars, sanitation, three hundred and twenty dollars, three hundred, not twenty dollars, three hundred and twenty thousand four hundred dollars. Uh, park expenses and staff, six thou, sixty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars, uh, city control, court fund, sixty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Court control fund, sixty-five thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, community service, um, projects, one hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. And, uh, various funds for the airport, the senior center, economic development, insurance, national guard, city hall building funds. Uh, one half cent funds. For, uh, vehicle payments, uh, rebuild Alabama funds for matching off grants and capital improvement plans for, uh, special projects. Um, welcome sign, roof repair, clock, and flooring in city hall. So, that's the highlights of it, the, the big things that everybody, that I guess everybody see the council, uh, and I that discuss, discuss detail about giving raises to all of our staff over the last, and I want this to be emphasized, over the last three years, we have consistently gave raises to all of our staff. This year, we've been able to give raises, um, that's, I believe, is a significant amount raised within our financial means, um, that tries to appreciate our staff, which is a dollar raise across the board for all staff. Um, we want to give five dollars, but we gotta find where the five, where the other folk gonna come from. Uh, so that being said, um, I think everybody is, um, excited about trying to get this year started, so we move forward. Um, well, that's your budget proposal, um, is there any discussion at this time? There's no discussion, I entertain most to approve the budget that's presented, the motion is there, say. There's been a motion, second motion, yes, all those in favor of approving the motion as presented, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the chair, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. I don't remember, uh, I don't remember accounts available. Council members, you've seen the bills asked presented to you, are there any questions about the bills that's presented? Alright, there are no questions about the bills that's presented, I entertain most to approve the bills. And so, the mood is seconded to pay the bills, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the, in the chair, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Um, police department. Alright, uh, this on, this since we're on our, uh, live, when we, we talking about, I'm, you go, here's the, uh, we did, uh, we have been more vigilant, I know a lot of people called me and asked me why, are they saying police in their neighborhood? I don't know why you don't want police in their neighborhood, uh, but unless you, anyway. So, saying all that, say, we're gonna be more vigilant, we getting calls about, about, uh, small people trying to knock on both doors, so please, ma'am, please, sir, as Chief always say, lock your doors, lock your cars, um, most thieves are opportunity thieves, and if you give them opportunity, then they will steal. Uh, secondly, homecoming, uh, I'm gonna mention that, as we are, as we talking about, uh, our plan is to continue to have our homecoming and festivities, uh, my original thought was to leave tailgating at seven o'clock without the careful consideration and listening to some, uh, some of my advisors, uh, it was, uh, it was put upon my heart by the Lord Jesus to allow it to ten. So please, uh, don't, let's be safe, uh, we see the crazy posts that people put up, we see, we hear the foolish talk that people have taught, you will go to jail. We will throw away the key until the next, until that Monday morning, and you can get bailed out. But I'm saying it on live, so that where they can replay it, and send whoever they want to come with your best behavior, we looking forward to the fun festivities. And we got, uh, we're gonna have very secure, we got a number of agencies that's gonna be with us, uh, and we're gonna be here to have a good time. So, uh, the parade route will be posted in the newspaper this year, that's what I mean, that people request it, so we will be putting that parade route in the, uh, newspaper. Uh, we're gonna get it to you by Thursday. So that way, it'll be in the newspaper for, uh, for next week, and people be able to see me staying where they want to. I'm sorry, and, and, uh, if you ain't see it, we got a new ride, so when you get pulled over with the blue lights, you'll know. So, hey, I seen Chief creep around, and some folk didn't know it was him, so I'm glad that, that we got it, so, uh, that being said, uh, street department. Street department.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just want to report, a lot of vandalism on our signs around town. It's cost effective for the city. It takes out of my department, that we don't have money anyway. Let's try to get our citizens to take better care of our school.
Yeah. Thank you, sir, much appreciated, um, fire department, fire chief.
No.
Are we still, I asked people to ask questions, are we still under ban? Well, it still, it hasn't rained a couple times, but we still under ban though, so please, ma'am, please, sir, don't burn. Not of the state, not from some heat mandate, it's the state of Alabama.
It, it, is it something on?
Remember the fire, dying family in Alabama some this week. Chamber of Commerce report, oh. I don't know if this chamber, but we gonna put it on there, uh. We're, we're going to do our, uh, trumpet treat on the, the normal one that we always do, on the thirty-first of October, at the National Guard. That's a Tuesday, uh, so it'll be, it'll be the thirty-first. So, if you want to call, please, ma'am, please, sir, we gonna partner with the chamber, uh, they gonna help us out with, so we look forward to them allowing opportunities to, uh, to be, uh, with us. Have that, at that time, if you're a business and you want to participate, please contact city hall, and you'll be able to, um, participate. Are there any questions about that? Yes, ma'am.
We, we've already sent out the letter to the businesses along with the registrations, um, set up, uh, on Tuesday, the thirty-first will be at four o'clock. The event kicks off at five, from five to seven o'clock, um, cars will not be able to move up to seven thirty, and we are also incorporated this year, uh, fright house. So, uh, park, they're gonna be set up in the front parking lot of the National Guard, and then the fright house will be at seven.
Alright, um, who's there in court? Uh, I see we got members of our, uh, board, they have a meeting, is there anything that you all like to say, any members of the board? We thank y'all for being with us, but you know there's another meeting that's gonna happen after this one, but thank you, guys. There you go, everyone, um. Industrial board. Anybody from the audience have anything? Good morning. You have time, you have two country minutes.
Two country minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll, I'll just take twelve. Um, good evening, um, I just need clarity on the homecoming, um, festivities as a visitor, and as my first time attending. I would just like clarity on the curfew and the time, and what's permitted, um, you know, just.
Most good, so, so typically, um, the homecoming goes, as it's always been, if you never came before, on Thursday night, they have a parade, not parade, uh, parade. Uh, on Friday, we have coordination at high school that morning, we have the parade that's normally at twelve, gonna be at one this year. Uh, lineup starts behind the city hall, um, if you want to put something in for the float, I think it's still time, or is it cut off? It's still time if you want to put a float in, um, as far as the tailgating goes, on Friday night, on Friday, uh, you can start setting up the spot at six in the morning. Uh, we'll be tail, a lot of tailgate there from six to ten, uh, at ten o'clock, we'll ask that everybody disperse, uh, that's normally around the time the game ends, and they will close out the event. So, as far as bringing items to school, we'll have specifics on what you can and can't do, so I'll get the, you know, to make sure that you, because it's there properly, so you gotta follow their rules and regulations. Yes, ma'am.
So, from six A M. is set up, and then dispersed at ten A M.?
No, ten P.
Oh, ten P, yeah, oh, okay, okay, so.
That's a quick tailgate, but you know.
Yeah, um, yeah.
No, 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 I, I apologize, six A M., so that way people don't tell, we will cut off time, uh, there will be a time where we stop, allow vehicles to come in that area, uh, for safety, for safety reason. Uh, that information again, as long as you get that from the school, they, they'll help forenact that with the law enforcement.
Okay, so, set up at six A M., and disperse at ten P M., does that mean that everything for, to my understanding, like I said, this is just merely clarity. Um, tents or whatever, um, people are bringing, um, barbecue grills, et cetera, is that dis, is that dissembled as well, is that included in the ten P M.? So really, people should be knocking things down by nine?
If that, if that what they need to do, that what they need to do, they gotta, they gotta take it out of their round too.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, because originally, it was set, so, you know what I'm saying, but God talked it, so, anyway.
Did he ask you by chance to extend it for thirty-five and over?
I did, he did.
He didn't, he hasn't, y'all didn't have that conversation?
Not that, not that time.
Okay.
But I go to speak, maybe he'll wait it over again.
I hope so, because, you know, I mean, just in consideration, you know, there are a lot of people, to my understanding, that, you know, come from out of state, you know, spending on, you know, and that's that time that Aliceville makes, you know, the economy booms then, because they're spending money. And, you know, ten P M. for people that are a hundred and fifty years old?
Hey, well, we're, we're, we can talk more online, but as of right now, that's, that's the, that's where it's at.
Yeah, I mean, you know, when you do make the decision, just trying to make, oh, it's fine, oh, okay, alright, I understand, I didn't know, I didn't know.
Chief, you guys, tell me one thing, uh, you come in, set up on Thursday, yeah, that's like it. Go set up Thursday, some people, my class set up Thursday.
Thursday, what time?
In even time. You can just see, you can just see myself. Councilwoman, anybody, is that, I wanna make sure it covers, not to get too far, so that, thank you for your time, that was good. Alright, uh, Councilwoman Bond, one. Oh, yeah, okay, okay, I apologize, thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Council, um, on, uh, on the error on my part, uh, I was supposed to have Councilwoman Bond's revival on the previous agenda, but I didn't add it to the agenda, and so I want to put it on for clear, for clarity, so that way nobody says it wasn't, if somebody want to fight, somebody didn't fight me, but due to my brain error, I still want to put it on the agenda, uh, it'll be on the new business, uh, to allow her retroactively to add, we gave her permission, just like we give everybody else permission, but we didn't put it on the agenda formally, and I want to make sure that we address it formally in our meeting. So that being said, would there be, uh, I'll make a, I'll second, second. One second.
I'll make a motion.
Who made the, who want to make a motion?
Me.
I'm like, okay, uh, motion by Mr. Wild, seconded by Mr. Councilman Lou. Alright, is there any discussion? Alright, if not, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the chair, the ayes have it, the motion carries, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Answering her question, I understand what she talking about, like, she comes from several, several thousand miles, which we had to pay her for being on. Maybe we can do better nation, you know, like, you may bring RVs, we have no hotels, we got one motel, and so, like, people traveling all those miles, need somewhere to stay. So, in the future, we should consider that.
Yes, ma'am, well, like I said, we, we've had a lot go on in our city, and we want to make sure we safe, because safety is my number one priority. I want to have fun, but as I stated on the live that, you know, everybody saw, um, if we gotta shut it all the way down, we gotta shut it all the way down. We look at Morgan State, it's always the situation that happened there, and, and they had to, they had to close up, I mean, that just is what it is. Uh, I, I think we gonna be alright, it's by the grace of God, but I just want to make sure that we're safe as possible, and that's my response to it. Because nobody else basically gonna be out there on TV, it's up to mine, and you don't, so at the end of the day, you know, after, and then after homecoming, ain't nobody gonna fight nobody again for next week, next year. So, uh, so that being said, Councilwoman Bond.
Just want to say, uh, thanks to, uh, the citizens, the citizens of Aliceville and council. Uh, our revival last week was a success, uh, we had one, one young man that rededicated his life back to God and, um, doing good, and then we had another young lady that was about eighteen years old, uh, she gave her life to the Lord and accepted Christ, so, uh, if, if nothing else was, was a success, successful, I count that as a blessing for somebody to accept Christ, so we're excited.
Yes, just to piggyback on some thing, I want to address a mission with the chief, but he, he got a call from his wife, so he's not in here right now, so I just told him, of course. But I like to say, or, I like to come at him though, since July, on the job that he doing, I might have parked cars on Friday night. I know last week that we rode. He got, he got in the car, they rode, they rode, they shot on, they rode, they rode, make sure everything was going on good. Uh, we had cars inside, we kept police cars outside, it was on foot, uh, foot control, with everything we could possibly, uh, that will make, uh, to help the situation, everything's helping, good, and it was really good. We done played two org games at home since then, and last one we had was, uh, you know, a lot of help, this early game, but we didn't have, at that race this weekend, but our people really working, and I want him to know. He left already, that's, you know, I must appreciate it, because when your hands on stuff, you can talk about, you being hand on, ain't nothing exciting. Uh, but if somebody put you in the, so then what I heard is what I'm there. Uh, this is starting, this is starting out four year, uh, together, thank God, about four year, and we look forward to getting better and doing better things, uh, for the citizens and the peoples of, of, in surrounding areas, not just Aliceville, we, you know, it's our fourth year. Uh, I'm in tomorrow, we going to eighteen, you know, so that's, that's a blessing by itself, you know, give the quality of another twenty. And the other, other thing is, is I want to piggyback off the, uh, revival, or that, or left the bar head, I got saved, I was saved. So, how great it was, it was, uh, the music and stuff don't excite me when you playing music with a revival and stuff, because sometime my car loud in the neck, you know, but I said it. So, it was great, the revival was good, or turnout was good, people stayed in car, they had tech sitting car, they were coming back, people that pulled a B mark, I mean, B mark, and just sit there, and then listen, they go part the road to the festival place, they sit there and listen, and see, these are good things that are happening in Aliceville. You know, people want to talk about it, but how I like going, what, what are you going there? So, just like great for the revival, and tip revival wars, now I'm looking at some more good revivals, they're just, they're just the one that we had, I can talk about it, or we said that you can talk about it. Uh, monster, uh, speaker, I, I can talk about it, think, uh, how great it was, had a different speaker every night, uh, I spoke one night, you know, but it was on. But, uh, I just want to let you do good work on doing, and don't let nobody turn you around and stop, so people need that, people that I've never seen in church, and I'm about to trade it all my life. You know, but they was there, and they each supported it, that's all I can say.
It gonna be a long, long week, anyway, uh, I know something that, uh, the kids. When they asked me that a couple weeks ago. You know, I went around and talked to some, and the kids hadn't had no counseling, I wish somebody was to get them to school or somebody, that, you know, some of these kids, you know, like, some people don't have PTSD. They gonna have Trump behind it, they still got Trump, so if, if you can't go out and seek some help. Seek some help, get kids some help, and, uh, other than that. Let's, let's, let, let's have a nice and safe weekend. Oh, just a couple, just a couple things, ma'am, we be out here, uh, um, uh, touch on since he, since Councilman, Councilman, uh, Wilkins brought it up. Um, if somebody is interested in professional council services, we do have a number of people who volunteer, uh, to be available. So, you can reach out to the city hall, uh, and we'll coordinate with you with those people that have volunteered their services, uh, from, we're not promoting them in any way, we're just, and that's why I'm not gonna say their name, but uh, you want to have their contact, you call city hall, and we'll give it to you, uh, because that is a very important, uh, factor. On a, on a, on, happy note, on today, I got an opportunity to go to Montgomery to, um, participate in a, uh, in a, uh, municipal municipalities committee, uh, uh, committee session, and got a lot of economic development information, and I'm looking forward to kind of passing off. Uh, there's a, there's a big, uh, there was a big push over this last legislative session outside for the hospital, uh, which I talked about in the same, uh, to uh, promote the game plan, and one of the things about the game plan is, it's economic development seed plan for the state of Alabama that was granted forty billion dollars. Uh, within that program, it is going to allow for, uh, one thing that I think that we can pick up on, which is site development. Uh, they have money for site development, which is like industrial parks, uh, and the like, and it also has site screening, uh, funds, so that way they come and screen site. Uh, there is a requirement for the, for that, uh, site to be a certain size, uh, for those, uh, for those requirements to receive that funding. I think that's something that we'll be able to, uh, and receive some funding for possibly, at least put in for it, uh, also through, definitely, there's, there's some funds, there's some new opportunities that you can get through that. So I think there's, there's a lot of opportunities out there, it's just a matter of us reaching out and asking, and we won't get all of them, but you won't get nothing if you don't ask them. Uh, the last thing I want to talk about is the hospital, uh, situation, uh, last, on Tuesday, which is yesterday. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to meet with the hospital authority, uh, the hospital authority has, uh, performed an audit on their, um, on their funds that they received, uh, the long story short about what that information is, uh, the hospital has a bond issue that's due, or for lack of better words, a payment that they have to pay, uh, every year. or for lack of better words, a payment that they have to pay, uh, every year at the amount of approximately one million dollars. That's how much their bond issue is. It's supposed to last until two thousand and forty-two. And so, that's the, that's the length of time that that, uh, is supposed to last. However, uh, they do have a tax base that we pay into as citizens. That tax base generates approximately one point five million dollars every year. So, a million of that has to go towards, uh, the bond issue. They do have five hundred thousand left, okay, everybody said. Uh, they have to operate the hospital, they still gotta keep the air, the lights on, and water on, uh, maintenance of the building. Also, they have a, a staff member who's there, um, so some of that information, insurance and the like, uh, which leaves a little bit of funds, so they still have debt to pay off. So, they're still about one point six according to what they told me, or us, one point six million dollars in debt outside of the debt service that they been paid. So, they're starting to see more, starting to see clearly, but it's, it's, uh, they're still in the hole. Um, one of the things that I suggested to them at that meeting was the, our ambulance service is struggling, uh, and they came and they talked to us already. Uh, so, I encouraged them to follow our lead in giving, uh, some funds to the ambulance service, whether that's ten dollars or ten thousand. Um, I believe that they have the room to get something, because we don't need to just save a hoard of money, and then we don't have an ambulance service. So, uh, I think that, uh, it, it was well received, I told other suggestions, and hopefully they'll, they'll take that. But, uh, I say that just so there's transparency, uh, I got the information, I wanna pass it out, so that way everybody who listens knows or asks questions, I don't have all the questions, you answer the Sean McDaniel, he the, he the director of the thing. So, talk, you know, but if you got questions, that's the information that I got. So, uh, that being said, uh, if nobody has anything else, then I entertain most to the journey.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And if any other, is there any other discussion? If not, have a good night.
Mr. uh, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Doug.
Mr. Sanders.
Mr. Todd.